Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our May 13th, 2019 City Council uh, may council meeting. The uh, time out is six o'clock. First out of our agenda is the information, sorry, our visitors and citizens forum. Uh, we have a speech request for Carol Maxine. Carol Maxine, uh, is there anyone else in the audience who should speak? I think so, our visitors and citizens. Let's see, we have a closing speaker, it's Mr. (inaudible).
Listen, we'd like to know if the council have any questions regarding... Okay, we'll adjourn our visitors and citizens forum at six oh two, we'll be back at seven o'clock.
Test one two, test, 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 test one two, test one two. Test one two, test, test one two, test one two, test one two. Test one two, test, test, test one two, test one, two, test. One two, one two, one two. Hey, uh, I'm gonna go in there and talk into this. Test one two, test one two three. Just a little guard dog, service dog for the star telegram rider. Test one two, I'm out here. Well, you see me. One, two, three, test, one, two, this is probably all the mic.
The time now is seven o'clock. The first item on the agenda is our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Janine Nunn. If you would, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Chris Dreese, our re-elected Birdville Independent School District Board Trustee and pastor of Halter Road Baptist Church, will lead us in our invocation. Thank you.
Father, we praise you. We thank you for your love, for your mercy. Father, we ask right now your blessing upon Halter City. Thank you, Father, for the outgilling council members and mayor for their service to your city. And, Father, I pray, Lord, you'll bless them for it. Lord, I ask for your wisdom to descend upon our new council members, our new mayor, Father. I pray, Lord, that you give it. And, Father, also give them the strength to compromise when equally it is appropriate. Lord, I pray most of all your blessing upon our city. Pray for peace and for unity. Protect our police officers, our firefighters, and everyone else in our cities. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Andrew.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Nunn, and thank you, Mr. Dreese, and congratulations on your reelection. So if you're looking at the agenda, it says announcements and events, but our city secretary had to step away for a moment, so we're going to move on to the proclamations. The first is EMS Week. Our chief, Jacobs, will be presenting our proclamation to Matt Zabatski with MedStar. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. At this time, I'd like to invite up a couple gentlemen from MedStar, Mr. Matt Zabatski and Doug Hooton, if y'all would come on up. And I'd also like to invite the, uh, the police chief's out of town right now, but Captain Irvin will be stepping in for him, so I'd like to invite him as a representative of the police department. All right, so it's my privilege to introduce the proclamation for EMS Week. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS is an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas- and whereas personnel from MedStar, Halton City Fire, Halton City Police Department stand ready to provide compassionate, life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designated Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, David Everett, and behalf of city council, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019, as EMS Service Week in the city of Halton City with the theme "EMS Strong: Beyond the Call."
(Applause).
And at this time, I believe Mr. Zabatsky has a short presentation for y'all.
Thank you, Chief Jacobs.
Thank you, Mayor Everett, and council members. Clearly, "short" is the operative word. You have a handout and a printout of the report in front of you. We'll just highlight a couple of things, and the nice young lady, yes. Chief Jacobs is an amazing representative of your city in the EMS system. He's on the First Response Advisory Board, a number of other groups, and you've got a number of folks that work really hard to make sure that the residents of Halton City are represented. Chief Cody Phillips does an amazing job with our Tarrant County Opioid Reduction Project. In fact, Halton City Police Department has been very aggressive with the use of Narcan to reverse opioid overdoses, and have been terrific in doing that. We continue to add a number of resources on the street to make sure that we're meeting the call volume demand, and you'll see how that's reflected in the response times. We've added about 100 unit hours per day, meaning 100 staffed ambulance hours on the street to cover our service area, and most importantly, Halton City. You'll see on the next page our response times for the last 12 months, continually averaging about that eight-minute response time standard across all priorities. The red line is the most important one. That is the life-threatening emergency calls, and our response times are helped by your first response organization, Halton City Fire Department, and you'll see what they do and some of the outcomes that they're able to achieve in just a moment. We did re-accredit this year in two key accreditations. One in ambulance operations by the Commission on the Accreditation of Ambulance Services, and a second in our 911 center by the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. There are only 26 out of 17,000 ambulance providers in the country that have been, oh, remember, don't press that button, that have been able to achieve, been able to achieve that standard, and we are very proud of our, of our team for being able to do that. We know that patient experience is very important, not only in the healthcare system, but certainly to you folks as representatives of the residents of Halton City. We have an outside agency that does our patient experience surveys every month, and month in, month out, we are in the top 5%, if not the top, for patient experience surveys, and you'll see some of those statistics in your report. The one that we'd like to highlight is not only are we consistently in that 95 percentile, but if you look at the number of times that our business office, the people who are attempting to extract $1,500 from people for using the ambulance, are scoring 100% patient satisfaction ratings, even from the patient, from the patients that they are trying to collect dollars from. So kudos to them. Our chest compression fraction, this is one of the measures for how well we do chest compressions. Thanks to the first responders like Halton City Fire Department, we're able to maintain a very high percentage of making sure that we are doing continual chest compressions on cardiac arrest victims, and as you know, that's the most important thing when it comes to determining whether or not someone's going to survive from a cardiac arrest. Our advanced airways and our ability to recognize that we are doing them correctly is also a crucial part of our patient care, and you'll notice that in 2018, we only had 1.6% of the time that we were actually able to unrecognize, or we did not recognize, a failed airway attempt. What that means is that 95% of the time, 99% of the time, we're actually able to successfully manage that patient's airway, and again, that's in part because of the first responders and everybody working together as a team. Those things combined lead to the fact that we are above the national average in cardiac arrest survival and bystander CPR and bystander automated external defibrillator use. So thanks to Halton City Fire Department and the rest of the team for helping us achieve that. You may have noticed our new ambulances on the street this year. We have purchased 12 of these so far. We'll have 65 total over five years. We have another 12 being delivered in July. These trucks were, in a large part, designed specifically by the crews that are in these vehicles. They have a number of enhancements that you'll see in the annual report that Doug highlights in his letter, but even the second batch that we're receiving here in July have some modifications from the first batch based on the crews that are in the ambulance's feedback and the folks that are actually working in the ambulance. We've talked before about our mobile integrated healthcare programs. Halton City is the second-largest enroller of patients into that program, so you'll see 157 patients have been enrolled in our high-utilizer programs or our hospice programs, our home health partnerships, and also our 911 nurse triage program, and that's the program where the nurses in our 911 center help direct very, very low-acuity callers to other resources than having to send the fire department and having to send the ambulance. And you'll see that 61 of those calls were handled by the nurse from Halton City, and 22 of them got an alternate response. We did not have to send an ambulance. We did not have to send the fire department, so that's been very good for the patients and for the system. Lastly, we'll mention our StarSaver Program. 37 households in Halton City, second-highest in our service area for a number of households that are part of the StarSaver Program. As you know, this helps to fray any uncovered cost for medically necessary ambulance service. We'd like to see that continually enhanced. There's a brochure in your handouts that describe that, and we're more than willing to work with any of the city members to figure out how we can get that message out and get more people to enroll. With that, again, special thanks to Halton City Fire, Halton City PD, you folks, and we're available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zabatsky. Are there any?[1002.12][1002.12](Applause). Are there any questions from the council regarding the presentation? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next proclamation is Life Guard Your Child Month. Our Assistant City Manager, Rex Phelps. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council. This is going to be Life Guard Your Child Month, and I believe we have Mrs. Alex Houghton here to accept this, if you want to go ahead and come up. And Officer Taylor will be here, too. Whereas Texas is leading, Texas is a leading state for child pool drownings, and drowning is the leading cause of accidental death for children ages 1 to 4 across the nation. And because it takes only seconds for a drowning to occur, it is imperative that parents not be distracted when there are the designated adult watching children near or in the water. And knowing our children need to be protected by caring, caring adults to have their safety ensured, we are asking parents and caregivers to life-guard your child when they are near or in the water. The Life Guard Your Child campaign is an initiative of Safe Kids North Texas led by Cook's Children Healthcare System, put into place to help prevent further child injury and death that has been adopted by Halton City and is being implemented across Halton City by first responders. And the goal of increased awareness and understanding by caregivers, policymakers, and the public at large regarding the possible dangers around water environments will aid in the prevention of further child deaths, in halt, prevention of further child deaths in Halton City from drowning. And engaging Halton City as a partner with Safe Kids North Texas in the Life Guard Your Child regional campaign will increase the reach of this year-round effort to provide ongoing education and awareness to protect children from drowning by implementing strategies such as water watcher tag use, preschool education, pool ordinance updates, U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jacket use, access to water safety lessons, and other layers of protection. It is for this cause that Halton City will join others to advocate for drowning prevention, education, awareness, and support of Texas communities. Therefore, on behalf of our mayor, David Everett, and on behalf of the Halton City Council, hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Life Guard Your Child Month in the city of Halton City, and urge all citizens to support the effort to prevent further needless child deaths from drowning. And I believe Alex will be here to speak for a moment.
Yes. Thank you. The campaign put on by Cook Children's, which partners with over 40 cities, like the gentleman before me said, is for drowning prevention, which is the leading cause of death for children ages four and under, and second-leading cause for children ages 14 and under. And Cook Children's and Safe Kids North Texas specifically have worked with Halton City PD for years now, giving out hundreds of car seats, installing car seats properly, and taking out the ones that are installed improperly, and saving the lives of hundreds of families out here in this community. And now Halton City, along with the support from the entire city, is supporting the drowning prevention campaign, and we just could not be more thrilled to have you guys support this, raise awareness, and help us provide preventative resources to the families in your community so that not, not only is there not another number that will happen for drowning, but that's another family that gets to have the life of their child fulfilled healthy and happily. So we just thank you, guys.
Thank you.[1235.32][1235.32](Applause). Okay, our last proclamation is Older Americans Month. Kristy Pruitt. Welcome, Ms. Pruitt.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, and all of our amazing guests. This is a full house tonight. I have the pleasure and honor of presenting the final proclamation of the evening for Older Americans Month. I'd like to invite Bobby Arthur, our Senior Center Supervisor, and I think Fran Nally's behind us as well. And so whereas Halton City, (inaudible) we love our seniors.[1290.12][1290.12](Applause). Don't be shy.
This is why we have the packed house.
I know. This is why we did it.[1297.23][1297.23](Laughter). All right, so whereas Halton City includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through the diverse life experience, and Halton City is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And Halton City recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all, like beanbag baseball. It was crazy this morning. Halton City can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Therefore, on behalf of David Everett, Mayor of Halton City, and the Halton City Council, we do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Older Americans Month in the city of Halton City, and urge all citizens to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community.[1365.54][1365.54](Applause). Okay, and Ms. Fran Nally, the president of the Senior Center Council, is going to say a few words.
Absolutely.
I know. Short and sweet. We would like to thank the mayor, council, fire department, police department, Bobby Arthur, and all the departments of the Halton City for their support to assist the seniors. The support allows the seniors to have a place to go, to aid them in their daily needs, food, games, arts, crafts, and friendship. Having communication with someone keeps seniors from being lonely and depressed. As you can see, when you join us in the activities, I'm happy and energized everyone is. In fact, talking about beanbag baseball, tomorrow we go to another center to beat them.
Tournament.[1420.12][1420.12](Laughter).
The center activities gives them a goal every day to get out of bed and be active. And accepting this proclamation, we seniors again say thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you.[1435.38][1435.38](Applause).
Get up there, Kristy.
Oh, my goodness.
Get back. Thank you all so much.
Moving right along to our announcements and events, our City Secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. Litty announcements for May 13, 2019, in the Public Library, teen programs, family movie night, super science Saturdays, adult GED, ESL classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for the dates and times, so please check the website out. Birdville Read Program, the summer reading program as a joint party for public libraries, begins Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the BISD Fine Arts Athletic Complex. The Birdville Historical Society will host their 20th Plus Cemetery Reunion at the historic Birdville Cemetery on May 18th at 11:00 a.m. They gather to tour the cemetery grounds, and then have lunch and enjoy the live entertainment. The Halton City Garden Club invites you to the annual plant swap on May 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Halton City Library. There will be vendors and gardening information available. The Garden Club also welcomes visitors to their meetings, which are held on the first Tuesday of each month, starting at 6:00 p.m. at the Halton City Rec Center. On Monday, May 27th, the American Legion Post Number 655 will host a Memorial Day ceremony at the New Trinity Cemetery, which is at 4001 Northeast 28th Street in Halton City, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and all are welcome to attend. The Halton Senior Center will be celebrating its 46th anniversary this Thursday, May 16th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon, with Charles Balding providing entertainment. The Sixth Annual Halton City Fire Police Camp will be held on July 2, excuse me, will be held July 22nd through the 26th, and the cost will be $100 for five full days of fun and learning. Kids must be entering fifth or sixth grade only. They are limited to 25 kids, and registration will begin, has begun online on the city website, and if we would like to donate to this camp, please contact Amy West at awest@haltonctx.com. And finally, the Halton City Office facilities will be closed Monday, May 27th for Memorial Day, and will open for business on Tuesday, May 28th, and that's our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Moving right along to our consent agenda, which consists of Agenda Items Number 1, 2, 3, and 4. Are there any questions regarding our consent agenda? Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions regarding the agreement with Tarrant County for tax collection.
Okay.
And the first one is in regards to compensation. I noticed that we pay 98 cents for the accounts located within Tarrant County, and then $2 is assessed per account for anyone located outside of Tarrant County, and I was wondering why or what the difference in those fees were.
And get back to you. They did not provide that, but that is the structure that's been set up. The, the structure has not changed. The only thing that's changed in the agreement is they have agreed to keep that same pricing for three years rather than just one.
Okay. And if you would, I would appreciate that information. And the other is on the investment of funds. They indicate that we get, once the payment is made for the taxes, the, they invest the funds, and so they say it is, once it's paid, but is it actually that day, or is it at one time, like at the end of the week, or exactly how are they working that?
I would need to ask them that as well for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none? Okay, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember Weest?
For the consent agenda, Items 1, 3, 4, make a motion that we approve.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. Let's see, Councilmember Grove?
Just for a second.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval in a second, and seeing no other questions or comments, if you would, please register your votes.
Dr. Dron, there he is. Okay.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving right along to our regular agenda, which is Agenda Item Number 5, Resolution Number R-2019-010-1, consideration and/or action regarding approval, the same resolution, Resolution Number R-2019-010, tabulating and canvassing the results of the May 4, 2019 general and special election for Place 5 and Charter elections. Mr. Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you've received the information on the resolution stating the results and the voting to elect the mayor in Council Places 1, 2, and 7, and also a special election was held to elect Council Place 5 and vote on the charter amendments. From your totals that you see, as we go to the final results, which is on Section 3, that Antrong has hereby declared to have been elected to office of mayor. Marion Hilliard is hereby dejected to have been elected. is hereby declared to have been elected to the Office of Councilmember Place 1. Walter Groh is hereby declared to have been elected to the Office of Councilmember Place 2. Gabe Van Zandt is hereby elected to...excuse me, is hereby declared to have been elected to the Office of Councilmember Place 7. That is in the general election and the special election. Susan Sould is hereby declared to have been elected to the Office of Councilmember Place 5, and all the 22 propositions have passed. So, it's up to council to recognize this as a canvas, to accept this as the official election results.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Are there any questions from the council regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, we are now in line for a motion.
Grant Weest.
Councilmember Weest.
Quick on the trigger today. I make a motion for Resolution R-2019-010-01, that we approve the canvas.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. Councilmember Thompson.
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. A motion for approval in a second, seeing no other questions or comments. If you would, please register your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. And congratulations to everyone, the newly-elected councilmembers, mayor, and also Walter Groh, and your reelection. Moving right along to Agenda Item Number 6, which is recognition of outgoing councilmembers. We'll start with Councilmember None.
Thank you. I get to go first. Well, the last four years for me have been incredible. I'm so honored, humbled, and privileged that I was elected four years ago to serve the city I've called my home since I was four years old. There've been a lot of changes in Halton City since I've been on the council. We've had two city managers, two assistant city managers, three fire chiefs, two police chiefs, and several department head changes. A new fire station was approved last year, and construction should start beginning in the near future. Major growth in the city has and is continuing to take place. Fuel City, Planet Fitness, the revival of the Halton Theater, the Meals on Wheels facility, the Grand on Beach Apartment Homes, the Barnes High Point Single Family, new home development that is currently under construction. New development is currently planned and permitted for at least one hotel and one restaurant along 820, with potential for further development. And Our Country Homes has acquired a 43-acre property for a mixed-use housing subdivision along Glenview and Halton Roads. This is to name just a few projects that have increased or will be increasing the ad valorem and sales tax base. It has been very exciting for me to see Halton City methodically obtain a foothold on new development. I'm especially proud of the Veterans Memorial located in Halton Park. When I ran for Place 1 four years ago, one of my top priorities was to honor our city heroes, our veterans, and our first responders, by building a monument worthy of these brave men and women who put their lives on the line. With the help of many, many people, all who had the insight and the fortitude to make the Halton City Veterans Memorial one of the finest in the state and one we are very proud of, this vision became reality. Thanks to all that made this happen, our mayor and council, city management, city staff, an extraordinary group of citizens that were volunteered for the Veterans Memorial Committee, a pro bono architect, a great construction company, and Bonnie Richards for her generous donation of the fountain. Words cannot express how proud I am and honored that we are beginning the second phase of this project. I sincerely hope that I can continue to be involved in this committee as we proceed to enhance this monument and enjoy celebrations and observances for many years to come. It's been a great blessing for me to serve as council liaison to the Library Board, the Parks Board, and the Veterans Memorial Committee. The volunteers, these volunteers have a great vision for Halton City and all our citizens, our youth, our adults, our seniors, and our veterans. It has been a pleasure working with them and listening to their enthusiasm and their love for our city. Lastly, having served as an alternate and a committee member on the Audit Committee during my tenure, has provided me great insight into the city's overall monetary and governmental procedures. It's very serious business. It's been quite the learning experience, and I'm proud to have been able to serve on this committee. I've had a great time. I've met a lot of wonderful people, many of whom I call my friends, and I sincerely wish the best for our new mayor and all our new and seasoned city councilmen and women. It's a great responsibility, but it's a very rewarding one. Thank you all for your service to Halton City. I especially want to thank the Halton City residents for having the confidence in me four years ago to be a part of the leadership of Halton City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Councilmember Watkins.
How about that? I could either talk four times that long or a whole lot shorter. I just want to thank all of y'all for allowing me to be on one board or other for 27 years. Some of you'll be glad to see me go, and the rest of them are in big trouble because I'm gonna be across the street and I'm gonna be back over here. I decided, I decided years ago that decisions are made by those that show up. I show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. You know, it's been said that if you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life, and that's certainly been the case with me since being elected, elected to this council in 2010. I've enjoyed every day that I've been here. And I want to thank those who have made my tenure on this council possible, the citizens of Halton City. For the past four years, you have graciously allowed me to serve as mayor of the community I love and where I've spent my entire life. You have warmly welcomed me into your places of worship, your homes, and into your confidence. Over the years, you've offered many kind words of encouragement and continued support while sharing with me your dreams of what our city can be, never losing sight of our collective vision of a better tomorrow and of an elevated quality of life for all who live here. I think it can be said that our citizens are very special people who believe in this community and want to see it remain a good, safe place to live, work, and raise a family. I am both humbled and truly blessed for having this experience and would be lying if I said that I will not miss it. I also want to thank my wife, Lisa, and children, Joshua and Chloe, for their unwavering encouragement. Even though we have had less precious family time together, they each fully understand the importance of our doing our part in serving our community. As mayor, I have enjoyed working closely with some wonderful councils and dedicated volunteers who serve on our various boards and commissions, and relished watching them grow in their belief and understanding that what they are doing is vitally important, and their sacrifice of time with friends and family is worth their efforts in service to this community. Likewise, I have encountered many fine people throughout my political career who have given me thoughtful guidance and suggestions, and moreover, I can only hope that they know who they are and how much I appreciate them. As a community, we are richly blessed to have such a dedicated and talent, talented staff, from our city manager, our assistant city manager, our city secretary, department heads, first responders, and employees in every department. They are truly the unsung heroes who keep the wheels of our enterprise moving forward, and for them, we should all give thanks. Lastly, I'm excited about what our future holds as our new mayor, Dr. Trong, begins his journey as leader of this community. Since first being elected in November of 2013, he has shown courage in bringing forth numerous ideas, many of which contribute to the economic growth we are enjoying today. And I am very confident in passing the gavel of mayor off to him and wishing him the many blessings that I have received over the years while serving this capacity. In closing, may God bless Mayor Trong, the city council, their families, our city staff, and may God bless the citizens of Halton City. Thank you.
As they depart, Judge Erby will come in and will be getting ready to do the oath of office to the newly-elected officers. If we could have all those that are going to be sworn in, starting with the mayor, then going to Place 1, Place 2, Place 7, and then Place 5 from special election. If you would line up across the front, please.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm just gonna speak up. I don't think my mic is working. When I proceed, will you please raise your right hands and repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Speaker.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will faithfully
faithfully
execute the duties
execute the duties.
of the office of
of the office of
of the mayor.
Vice one.
Vice two.
Vice three.
Vice four. Thank you. Of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas.
and will
and will.
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution
the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States.
and of this state
and of this state.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you. You all may put your hands down. Congratulations.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna present Mayor Trong with the certificate of election that he will present the remaining council members. Mayor Trong, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of a general election held May 4, 2019, Antrong was duly elected mayor. Testimony where I hereby sign my name and cause the seal of the City of Halton City, Texas, to be affixed at this seat at Halton City this 13th day of May 2019, Art Camacho, City Secretary. Congratulations. Once he does that, you can take your seat. As a result of the general election held on May 4, you are the winner for City Council Play 1. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is certified that you are the winner of City Council Play 2, and we know you can grow.
Gabe.
Gabe.
I'm sorry. I'm all right. Okay. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is certified that you are the winner of Play Number 7. Congratulations. We'll work with you for a long period of time. Thank you.
So, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is certified that you are the winner of Play Number 5 with our runoff. Thank you.
Well, I need to move, uh, moving my house.
Thank you, the, uh, Wadao Dragon Dance. This student I will form, uh, will form by me in about twenty years ago, and it's still running. I'm getting old, but they're getting younger. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Welcome. I am a new mayor, but before I get my speech, I would like to ask a new-elect council member. First, Mayor Anh Huyia, Play Number 1, would you have something to say to people?
Oh, my goodness. I don't even know where to start. This is my second time around, and I had a wonderful time, and it was a great experience the first time around. So now I get to come back and see some of the things that started when I was here before now come to fruition and begin to develop and grow. And it's been so exciting to see all the growth that's happened since I've been gone. So I just want to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to serve again, and I'll do my very best to serve you in the best way possible. Thank you.
Mr. Council Play 2, Water Girl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to first and, uh, thank my family for supporting me, uh, through this run. It was kind of tough. Uh, also, I'd like to thank the citizens of Halton City. A lot of them I met. I met some new friends. Uh, it's been touching, and it's an honor to be on the council at this time. It's a historic time where we have an Asian-American mayor and a majority female council, which I think, which, which is a story of my life because I have three women in my house and two female dogs. So I'm prepared for this, prepared for this moment. So a lifetime of, uh, of practice. So I just want to say thanks to the citizens of Halton City for allowing me to spend two more years. So thank you.
The next would be, uh, Play Number 7, Ms. Gay Vanzan.
Thank you, Mayor Trong. I just want to say...
Don't cry.
I am overwhelmed and humbled by this honor, and I want you to know, whether you voted for me, voted against me, or haven't voted yet, you're a citizen of this city, and I'm grateful for you. And my prayer is that I will not just serve you with integrity, but I will serve you with a humble heart, and that I'll do my very best by you. And you have my pledge on that. And I just want to say, let's do it together and make Halton stronger together.
Thank you, Ms. Vanzan. And now, a, uh, Mrs. Susan Saul. She won the, uh, election on the special, uh, election. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I'm learning this new little system here. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, you citizens for voting me in. Um, I, this is a brand-new adventure for me. I am going to be in a huge learning mode for this first year, uh, and then I get to run again. But, uh, I, I, I feel like I am surrounded by greatness, and as Gay stated and her slogan is "Halton Stronger Together." And I believe, truly believe, that this council is going to take us, our city, forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, uh, my turn. Uh, please be patient. Take about just seven minutes. Not long. My name is An Trong. Most of you already know. I'm a new-elect mayor for Halton City, Texas. I welcome everyone to my first meeting as the mayor for the city. I'm sorry that, uh, our chamber is too small, uh, so majority of you still stand outside or in the parking lot, but in the future, we might have a better one for all of us. You are now witness to historic events in the city. First one, you are elect the first Vietnamese or Asian-American man in the city. First Vietnamese in the state of Texas on many, many other states. Second one, we have the four lady council members. The majority of the council are female. That the historic moment. Thank you for voter to elect me to this position, and I also thank all the voter. You did not vote for me, but at least as a mayor, I urge all citizens to support me and our council, our staff, to restore the integrity, respect, and compassion back to this city, to heal the wound that has been divide our city for many years. To do this, I ask the citizens regularly involve in the city meeting, regularly communicate with our staff, our council, and me. We are here to listen your concern, your suggestion, but must be in a friendly way. As a mayor, I ask the council members, staff, and citizens to comply with my new policy, the respectfully meeting policy. All council members, director, staff must dress properly during council meeting. If you can't formally dress, I expect male members and director at least wearing a jacket. On the other hand, I ask all visitor attending our meeting in this chamber to dress casual or formal at your choice, but no send no or short unless that person have a medical issue. Do not use this podium to attack our council member, our commissioner, our staff, and all the citizens. No name-calling. I believe most problem can be solved through good communication way. In this election, the overwhelming Asian voter involved along with all the voter gave us the tremendous victory. Thank you. To the Hispanic citizen of Halton City, there is a large population of minority in the city, Asian, African-American, and especially Hispanic, who culture, ideas, and value are not present beyond their business and their labor because of their anxiety in participating in the politic in Halton City. At a minority of the Asian community, I want to encourage you to get involved in all of the area where your home, your family, your business can be present, and this star would becoming an active voter in the election that are held in the city, country, state, and nation. In the past, we have had a few Hispanic council member, but not enough to present the Hispanic population. I ask that you let your voice be heard and not be afraid to participate, but vote in on of the future election. Señor, señora, para los ciudadanos hispanos de Halton City, me gustaría hablarles de involucrar más en la comunidad. Hay una gran población de minorias en ciudad, asiática, afroamericano y especialmente hispano, cuya cultura, ideas y valor no están presentados más ya de sus negocios y labor de vivo a su ansiedad en participar en la política de la ciudad de Halton City. Como mi mayoría de la comunidad asiática quiero animales involucrar en todas las áreas donde sus hogares, familias y la empresa pueden presentarse y eso comienza con conversidad en un voluntad activa en la elecciones que se se le prende en la ciudad, condado, estado, y nación. En el pasado hemos tenido algunos hispanos como miembros del consejo pero no lo suficiente para presentar a la población hispana. Le pido que den que su voz sea escuchada y no tengan miedo de participar pero votar en toda la elecciones futuras. Muchas gracias. That's Spanish. Now, in Vietnamese. My door is open to the citizens of Halton City. Please feel free to share your thought, your suggestion, and your concern with me, with council, and staff. Together, we all accomplish great things for this city, and we will continue on this path to success by honoring past tradition and forging new ones. We will show Halton City true potential to those around us. Thank you all citizens, council members, staff, commissioner, public safety officer, my family, and especially my wife Lily worked hard during election, my friend, my children, my daughter, volunteer supporter, all media, and former South Vietnamese military and their organization, and especially my former fighter pilot during the Vietnam War who were stationed in the Play Co in the same play with us. They sit in front, Mr. Lieutenant Thuy Hueng. Stand up. That's a fighter pilot. It long look right now. And, uh, and Mr. Vin Thung, a fighter pilot, A-1 Sky Raider, and his wife. Thank you so much. They are here to witness an unbelievable journey and dream from one of their compresses to become a mayor in Halton City, Texas, USA. Special thank to Mayor David Everett, council member Janine Nuns, and Bob Watkins for your service for many years in the city. The future is now, and I hope you can join me on this journey. My message is for change. You can count on stronger together, and we know how to grow. God bless America. God bless Halton City, and God bless all citizens. Thank you. Okay, the next item will be number eight. Uh, we want to do a three-city development agreement. Go ahead, Mr. Ragfile.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Congratulations to the new members of the council. Uh, important decisions actually start right now for the new council. And, uh, so, and this kind of, this is a decision that's going to impact this city for many years to come. The background on this is that the Halton City Economic Development Foundation, um, had recently entered into a sales contract selling the forty-two, well over forty-two acres right across from the library to, um, Our Country Homes or Beaton Path Development. And that's going to be for residential subdivision. Now, we talked with them, and of course, they came wanting some incentives, uh, to, uh, to make the four hundred-plus residents there. And, uh, and of course, this is going to be something a little bit, uh, a little bit step, a step higher in terms of quality than, than, uh, than, than what maybe this would have been without the incentives. So we're going to talk about that for just a few minutes. The, um, the benefit from the property improvement, of course, will increase the tax base, be economic stimulation, serving as a catalyst for further develop economic growth, and the developers agreed to increase the first phase from fifty to seventy-five residents, uh, residential units to a hundred units. So we can move that growth and, and capitalize that on as, as fast as we can. They've agreed to permanently allow public access into their developed parkland, which we're going to show you a presentation in a minute so that you can see exactly what we're talking about, and that they're going to take care of this park in perpetuity at no cost to the city. So essentially, the city will have another park, but we don't have to maintain it or pay for it, and that's always a, a good thing. Now, they've also agreed to make significant improvements to Spring Lake Parkway and, and truly make it a Parkway, and we're going to show you, uh, a picture of that, and they're going to explain to you what they're talking about there. But that's, that's a significant investment in that area for them to do that. And of course, that during this buy-down or, or construction phases, uh, they've agreed to, um, maintain the entire property, and it goes back on the tax rolls immediately at the closing of, of this deal. So in return, the city would waive the parkland dedication requirements and the park fees and inspection fees. And the city will, uh, will allow the developer to hire a third-party inspection service, but we'll still retain ten percent of administration fee of what each one of those permits would have cost because we still have to, uh, we still have to process those. And, uh, they get up to doing a hundred inspections a day sometimes. It's actually a win-win scenario for us because, as you know, we're lean as far as full-time employees, so it frees us up. We have a lot of developments coming on that, you know, you, you, uh, most of councils heard about, and even the new council members have heard about, with the new business park going up on that, that eight-twenty area, the Two Mariots and so on. Uh, not to mention the, uh, the neighborhood north that's already, uh, they've already sold twenty-two houses there. And so you see one coming up, but there's many more coming. And then we have the, uh, high, uh, the luxury apartments that are coming, uh, as well. So we're going to be very, very busy. So we tried to create a win-win and find out exactly, um, how this is going to benefit the city, but also benefit our country homes. And so the incentives waived would be the city, uh, inspection fees, which you got in your packets approximately two-hundred-seventy-four thousand, park dedication fees approximately a hundred-and-six thousand. But keep in mind, they're, they're essentially giving the city a park that we don't have to maintain. Most, that, that doesn't happen in, in most other areas. The, uh, the revenues, of course, would be the ten percent, uh, permit fees. The annual tax revenue that build out is, uh, around seven-hundred-ninety thousand. Of course, this is at today's valuations, and it'll take several years to ten years for this thing to be completely built out. So we're very excited about this. We think that this perhaps will give us the biggest return for the investment of anything that the city manager and I have know about, and at least in recent times here in, in Halton. And, uh, we also have our economic development consultant Trent Petty here. What Trent has done, and I'll hand those out in a few minutes tonight... What Trent has done, and I'll hand those out in a few minutes tonight, he took the liberty of, of doing a thirty-year forecast for the benefit revenue-wise that this development would, would be for the city. And after John from Our Country Home does a quick presentation, Trent will be here to go over that thirty-year forecast for you. So that being said, well, let me just also say this. The benefits that you see in your packet that you're going to see with Trent's thirty-year forecast does not really take into account all the tertiary benefits, you know, from that type of growth with a discretionary income around that corridor that we desperately need to develop and develop in the right way so that benefits the whole city, you know, with the catalyst for more restaurants, retail, things of that nature to feed that area and to feed the whole city. So we're very excited about it. Now, what I'd like to do, because we do have a new sitting council, is for John to come up here from Our Country Homes and just give us a quick rundown of this, of what this development will look like and what will be like. So John, if you'll come up. Now, John, you've been here before, so you know how to use that, right?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, council. I'll try, I'll try to be fast. This is a august program tonight. I really appreciate it. I, I want to, before I start, I want to say thanks to Ricky Brown. He's on your EDC board and he's worked with us and he wasn't easy to deal with but I think he, he presented a vision that Haltam City, he, that made us step, step up to the plate and we appreciate that. And also Rex to, for really creating a vision that allowed us to do a variety of homes, not just, you know, typical conventional homes. And we're very excited about that and we're challenged for that. This is a big development for us and hopefully it's going to be a big development for Haltam City. Again, contextual, this is where the site is, forty-two acre site. We're very excited about this from a housing standpoint. Again, fifteen minutes away from DFW Airport, ten minutes away from downtown Fort Worth. We think we can attract a lot of people. We think there's a lot of homes that we're going to be able to build that will be available for Haltam City citizens. Hopefully they can, they can be that. So this is the site, forty-two acre Spring Lake Parkway on the north, three-seventy-seven on the east, railroad tracks and Glenview on the south and then Haltam Road. So excellent access and, and just a great site for us and, and we, we kind of gone through this over the last few months. This is the zoning category. We actually took your zoning category, the SF1, SF2. What we're calling SFA is the attached dwelling units, which would include the duplex and townhome dwelling units. And the way that, the way the zoning is, occurs is that we have to build the higher end of that. If we step up, we can't go down with, with our development. We have to go up with it. So we've structured that way that everything has to be built, in other words, everything could be the SF1 in that. If we, we move up, we have to stay within those zoning categories but we, we're allowed to do a higher end on any case if we change, you know, if, if there's certain houses start to sell in that area. The development standards, there will be a permanent homeowners association, master irrigation and landscaping throughout the, throughout the entire site. So basically this is what we call a lock-and-leave lifestyle. Everybody will pay a homeowner's dues and all their front yards will be maintained equally. There will be a central park that will be maintained equally within the area. Again, I talked about cumulative zoning, SF1, two thousand square foot or greater homes, single-family homes, two, two onsite parking requirements. SF2, minimum fifteen hundred square foot homes. And then that we have a paired home with duplex, twelve hundred square foot and a townhome, minimum a thousand square foot. These are all minimums that we have to build in that area. We have enhanced building design standards. You'll see a couple of our deals, but we have a multitude. We're very excited because it's not just one type of housing, what I would call conventional housing. This is a mixed-use, you know, development that allows for a variety of housing throughout the entire development. All of them, then will be rear alley or side entry garages. So we're trying to keep the cars off the street, keep them off. These are going to be wider sidewalks to encourage more pedestrian facilities and, and again, connections with that. There's more than twelve percent of total open space, probably more than that once we get through. But a lot of open space, this, these mixed-use developments, they are more dense but we, we try to orient the open space and offer a lot of open space, encourage people to get out and walk their dog, enjoy their neighbor, don't just put a big, big tall fence between them. They're going to have to be involved with the entire community. We're going to have a central park with a pavilion, a plaza, dining and gathering areas and a street parking for events. I know we're right across the street from the library and we understand you have a new library. We, we hope that there's going to be annual events at our park. We will build it and HOA will be maintaining it again, but it will be a public access park. So it's open to all the general public within the city and we hope to, again, have a couple of event, citywide events at, at the park. And I'll talk about that in a minute. There's a four-foot existing external sidewalk around the site. It was built a few years ago to, to connect the schools in the area. All the internal sidewalks will be five-foot and then we have trail sidewalks that will connect people up. In fact, there'll be a jogging route that you can jog or walk your dog or walk through the area that would be six-foot wide trail. So clearly exceeding the requirements. There's decorative street lighting and entryway signs throughout and street trees every thirty-five feet throughout the air, throughout the area. This is the public improvements. In this case, this is where we're spending a lot of our money. A tradition or a conventional development would cost about four million dollars to build a public infrastructure. We're spending over seven million dollars in public infrastructure on this site and that's why we ask for some of these incentives to help us out because we're, we're building more, more street system, we're building alleys, we're building wider sidewalks throughout there and it really helps to, again, to make it a sustainable development over time. These are the improvements to Spring Lake Parkway. It's kind of hard to tell but this is Spring Lake Parkway on the, the upper slide says the south side of the road. We'll be, we'll be basically improving that and extending those, those medians out there for, to allow parking. On the north side of the road where the apartment complex is, we'll be restriping the roadway. We don't have access to that side of the road but we will be restriping the road similar to that picture on the, on the, on the bottom. The, the south side of the road will have those bumpouts that we will improve with that, with medians and with additional trees on that side as well. So we'll be restriping and re-improving that. It does not affect the capacity at all of Spring Lake Parkway. There'll still be two twelve-and-a-half foot lanes. It will, will function very much as it does today. This is our master plan. You can see all the street trees there, a lot of the open space that, our central park directly across from the library there, that will be again, open to the public. We're going to be doing this in phases. There's actually, I talked to you about the different variety of housing. We actually have two depths which would allows us to develop this, put in the infrastructure and we can begin to change some of the housing depending on what the demands are over the second, next several years. We have a villa, cottage, a veranda, a paired home or duplex and a townhome, Incap and a townhome. And this is kind of, this is our master plan. Again, it could change over time but again, with the zoning, we have to go up zoning with that. This is our phase. Our phase one will actually be about a hundred and fifteen lots with phase one. We're building from, from the west all the way to the east. Phase two would include that large area. Phase two and three, we're not sure exactly what's going to be built there but it's going to be built. That would be phases two and three and then four and five going all the way to the east. Again, in, I don't, won't go back to the zoning but there's two major required open space areas. One of them is the central park but will have multitude of open space within that, within that area. Again, you can see our open space plan. I don't know if this shows or not. You can see some of these other park areas, open space areas. The six-foot wide sidewalks that I talked about will be connecting up north. In, in these areas, there'll be six-foot sidewalk here, there'll be a six-foot sidewalk connecting in these open space areas. There'll be one that would connect through here and there will also be one that will connect all the way through here. So you can see you, as people get up, they could have access to the park and there's be, be jogging areas that they could come all the way through and walk and jog through the, the entire site as, as this gets developed. We are having a, most of it will not have fencing. We, we want it open, more open, but we are fencing on, on Glenview Drive. There will be a iron fence, a five-foot iron fence here. We're siding those. There's no parking on Glenview. There will be parking on Spring Lake. There's no parking on Haltam. And then we're putting a six-foot wooden fence up against the railroad tracks here with a six-foot sidewalk inside of that. So you can see the programmed areas are here and here but you can see we'll have a multitude of other open space areas that will be connected through six-foot side, you know, trail system through there. This is the park. We haven't fully designed the park but these are the elements that would be included in the park. There will be a pavilion, which would include a concession stand and storage for tables and chairs and things like that that we put, put out throughout the area. But this is kind of a general conceptual plan with that. We will, it's also available. It will be Wi-Fi connected. The park will be Wi-Fi connected and we'll also have electricity to allow for food trucks to connect to that site for, for different areas. There will also be, again, an outdoor gathering area, a plaza, formal plaza, an event lawn. As you can see, kind of the event, as we have more formal events through, through there. On-street parking and then a continuous six-foot wide sidewalk throughout, throughout the park there. Again, this will be fully built by the development during phase one. It will be open to the public and, and again, we hope to have public events in this park. We hope this is a part of the city and the community to enjoy. This is kind of a pictures of the community character. These are a couple of pictures of what the concession stand could look like. We're, we're still designing it and look like that. So you can see the houses with wider sidewalks in front, lots of street trees in the area. So this is kind of just a community character of what, what you're going to look and feel. Again, a lot of open space and greenery in the area. These are just typical product examples. We have what we call a cottage and a villa or larger, these are the, be the, this is a, again, a one-story villa, two-story villa. This is a one-story cottage and a two-story cottage. That doesn't necessarily determine the brick color. There's several designs that we have but these are kind of typical renditions of what that would include. We also have a detached veranda and then we have a duplex or, or in, like this. This is a duplex, has entryway on the, on the front and on the side. So it actually looks like one big building but it's actually a duplex and then we have a, again, there's a, a townhome or fourplex in that area. So there'll be specific standards for development standards. We, we appreciate working with the city staff on that and, and, and we're excited to get, move forward with this. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions, Matt?
Ms. Brown, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Pitts, Dick, once again, I cannot express the thank you for you, Dustin, Our Country Homes, choosing Haltam City. I think this is the game changer for us. I think this is the face of Haltam City for the future. It makes me very proud that as the EDC, that over some very respectful companies that we did choose you guys. This, this just makes, just thrills me. Like I said, once again, this is a game changer for that area, for the face of Haltam City. And I want to thank you again for choosing Haltam City and let's get it going.
Thank you and we're ready to move forward. We, this is our, our largest development of this type of development as well and we, we're very excited about that and we think there's a great demand for housing and location in this area. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown and Ms. Crowe, go ahead.
When do you think you're going to be able to start breaking ground and kicking this out?
Since we've already turned in the plenary plat, we hope to get approved for that. It'll be coming to P and Z pretty quickly and we, since we can turn that around for a final plat, we'd like to be tearing up dirt by the first of the year. I mean, we'd like to be breaking ground by January or February. Is that's, that's our, that's, that would be our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Saul.
Excuse me. Hi, Susan Saul.
Yes.
What do you think the, or have you figured out how much the homeowners association fees are going to be?
They're going to be probably about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. This is what they will be. Again, it's a lock-and-leave lifestyle. So you don't have to have a lawnmower, everything's going to be maintained. So we, we figured, again, we're trying to keep the, the cost down and affordable housing in, in this area but we think that extra a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a month is going to be enough that you wouldn't have to, in other words, you're not going to have to mow your yard. Everything's going to be maintained that way. So frankly, that's what we're finding. People are not wanting to maintain their yards and so we're going to maintain it for them and that's kind of what we're finding. This is kind of the new lifestyle everybody's moving towards.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saul and Ms. Mazza.
Thank you, Mayor Trong. I, I have a question. I'm sorry if it's a rookie question or redundant.
No.
I'm just curious, since we're adding a hundred homes, did I understand that correctly?
On phase one.
On phase one. So overall, how many civil service people will the city need to add to their roles to cover the new citizens?
That's going to be a question for Trent Petty in a few minutes.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of the dues, is there any planned increments? I mean, do you see that going up and if so, would that be like every five years or what type of increments would you probably be looking at?
Whatever it's going to take to maintain it, it's going to be maintained. I mean, obviously, just like the city has to assess what their tax rate is every year, we'll have to assess what the, what the, you know, and, and then what will happen is, as we take that over, the developers will, it'll be run by the, the association, which will be made up of homeowners in that area. So they'll have to make those decisions at that point. But we have set it up that, that park will be perpetually maintained and everything will be perpetually maintained. So whatever the cost of that would, would be, I don't see, again, I see this as economies of scale. Once we build everything out, it should get, you know, it shouldn't go up because we'll have more people to pay for the improvements, if you will.
Another question, will individual homeowners be able to have barbecues at their residence or is that going to be at the park?
That's going to be at the park.
Okay.
Almost all, most of that area, there's no, I take that back. The, the detached homes, the villas and the cottages could have a small backyard patio area that they could have, have their area. But many of the areas would be designated, well, we'll put, you know, we'll put charcoal grills and things like that in, in the public parks as well.
Okay, and you were also saying that there would be no fencing. Is that applicable to the alleyways?
No, there will be a small, some of the areas will, the, well, for instance, the townhomes will not have any fencing. So you're going to have, your garage will come off the rear, they won't be have anything. But your detached homes will have a small patio, will have a patio area and a small fenced-in area. Yes, there will be a small fenced-in area for, for the detached homes. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think from planning and zoning, I seem to remember that part of the HOA fees would include not only the lawn that you've talked about but also the painting of the home.
Yes, on the townhomes, there is typically, some of that will be for an insurance policy, if you will. For, for instance, the townhomes are attached. So if a hailstorm came, we don't want to just redo one townhome and if they're connected. So there's insurance policy that basically pays for if there's damage to the, the attached homes and to repaint those to keep them consistently looking well. So there, the, the attached homes will have a little bit higher dues for that because we will paint, we will paint those attached homes, the townhomes, maintain the roofs and the exterior of the buildings because they're attached and it's much easier to do that. And it's, it's also safe for, they, they won't have to get a full insurance policy like you would typically get on a house there. So there's a little offset, offset in that.
Okay, but the attached houses, will they have any kind of requirement for maintenance?
The detached houses?
I mean, the detached, yes.
Oh, yes.
Or the?
I mean, there, there's maintenance, there, everything is irrigated. We, in other words, they'll pay for an irrigation system that will do that. Will basically mow and maintain the yards but everybody, I mean, if they want to put flowers in their yard, it's not, not as sterile as I would, you know, we want to encourage individual, you know, people to, to do things with their individually detached homes. But basically, it's a single-family home. They would own the lot and they would maintain that and there would be homeowners association and, and again, we can write letters and, and assess them. For instance, if their tree dies, it's a good example, if their tree dies out front, we would say, you want to replace your tree? If you're not, we'll replace your tree and send you a bill for, to do that. So there is a standard to, to maintain that, yes, over time. So there is a standard to maintain that, yes, over time.
Okay, so there are some expenses to the homeowner as far as the upkeep of their home, like the painting of the exterior and so forth?
Of the detached homes, yes, ma'am.
Of the detached, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. There's no more counsel question, Mr. Trent Petty. Will you come up?
I just wanted to kind of clarify some, just to give you a picture for the audience. You know, our Country Homes did the villas. What it is, is high-quality, low-maintenance lives and what we're trying, what we're finding out is that it's kind of the, a move a lot of, a lot of communities are going to, the young professionals or millennials like that lifestyle, 55 and over like that lifestyle. And so, you know, we, we think it's going to be a good thing and a good fit for here. Another one, not saying that our Country Homes did this one, but Hometown in North Tretson Hills, you know, those are kind of, you know, the decorative streetlights, the big sidewalks, you know, that kind of thing. So just kind of, you have that picture of what we're talking about. So I'm going to turn it over to Trent now.
Good evening, Trent Petty, 1021 Simmons Drive in Keller. Congratulations, new council members. Look forward to working with you. Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have worked with the City of Haltem City for over a decade. Our firm is a firm that represents only cities. We do not represent developers. We provide objective financial analysis of a variety of different projects, including looking at the impact of new residential buildings and new commercial buildings. So when we looked at this project, the city asked us to take a look at the overall expenses relative to the revenues, to your question earlier. One of the things that makes this a bit of a unique development is the fact that the city is not going to have an extremely high maintenance burden on this because the developer is maintaining the parks, because the developer is basically maintaining all of what would normally be the open space requirements of the city. There's not going to be an incremental increase in city services as a result of this. So this was a big impact in going forward to look at this development. Most of the time, when you look at a residential development, you look at the property taxes that it produces compared to the expenditures that are required to serve that development, most of the time in a residential subdivision, you end up upside down, meaning the city is basically paying more than they are receiving in revenue. That's the premise we wanted to look at here, to see if that was the case here. And it is not the case. And I'm happy to report that in these circumstances, the revenues that are produced from this subdivision, because the city is not having to add fire, the city is not having to add police, there are no additional civil servants that will be necessary at all on the payroll. This is an area that is already served by utilities, it's already served by public safety, so there's no direct increase in city costs. So what that does is allows us to look at the revenue stream from the development against your existing expenditure base. Now, we know the city's budget is not going to stay the same, so we calculate that at basically the same trajectory that you have looked at in the past, and we divide that against the number of new people that will be in the subdivision and then compare that to the normal growth of the city. So in this case, what it does for Haltem City is you actually turn out in the black from the very first day, which is a very unusual situation. It's one that, one of the reasons we negotiated very hard on this project was to be able to get to that point. Every development that comes to any community comes in with expectations, and this one was no different. And I'm very proud of the work that Keith and Rex and the staff did in putting together what I consider to be an empirically logical project that gives us a very good financial footing to go forward. It also gives us, from an economic development standpoint, a very important new facet of Haltem City, and that is the ability to put in high-end, different types of housing in an area that we really need that because we want to see more commercial, more retail, more restaurants. We want to see that 820 corridor really begin to bloom. In order to do that, especially from retail perspective, we needed to have a higher-end product. We needed to have some residential product that was a little atypical, not only in terms of its age, but in terms of its values. So when we look at the overall values of this product and project that against what will be an owner-occupied subdivision, very attractive when it comes to economic development prospects. So we're, we're happy to say that we've done the analysis. We believe that Haltem City turns out much better than it would have been without this project. I can tell you that had this been a typical, gritted-out, single-family subdivision, I would be telling you right now that the cost of services would probably be higher than the revenues. But because we have an extremely high value per unit, a very low maintenance cost, an overall economic impact that reflects that diversified product, happy to say that we're not in that condition. So I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
You have another question? Ms. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In case you don't know, my reputation is the questioner.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a lot of, several of them.
Sure.
If I understand correctly, the developer is actually the one who will be constructing all of the infrastructure, putting in the sewer lines, the water, the roads and all of that with the curbs and the sidewalks and.
That's correct.
Streetlights.
Yes, ma'am.
So they will be putting that in. I did not see in the document how that part of it would be paid for. I mean, that, the city is not going to have to pay them back in any manner.
Correct, that's right.
For any of that. However, when everything is completed, then the city takes ownership of the infrastructure?
Yes, all that public infrastructure becomes dedicated to the city, just like any other development. So the developer is on the hook to build that infrastructure. The developer must build it to the city's standards, and even though they have the separate contract for inspection of the homes, it still has to be reviewed by the city engineer when it comes to all the public infrastructure. So once that infrastructure is complete and built to the city's standards, then that infrastructure becomes dedicated to the city and it becomes an asset of the city.
Okay, good, that's great. And you answered three of my questions.
Correct.
Thank you. The bottom-line one, though, is for the sale of the land, how long do you think that it will, because if I understand correctly, it'll be paid incrementally?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, after certain phases, we'll get a portion of the cost of the land and then et cetera. How many years do you think it will take to, to recover all of the cost of the land?
We have projected six years, that they would make six equal payments. And essentially, you are conveying all of that land to them, but they are responsible for paying for all of that land. So in essence, it's almost like a loan.
Right.
Where the property is conveyed and they're being allowed to pay for that over time. They must pay the entire price tag, no matter what. The reason we set it up this way was to be able to give them the ability to avoid a lot of working capital going into a project that didn't necessarily have a benefit, a cash flow benefit associated with it for some period down the road.
Correct.
So when we build a subdivision, they will have to essentially build all of the elements of infrastructure that are necessary to serve the entire subdivision. Like, for example, when they build water and sewer systems, that's got to be done holistically. So there's a lot of the project that will have to be done upfront. But when it comes to residential streets and actually gritting out and plating lots, curb and gutter, that's where that phasing of cost will come in. So the city will get all of its money back by the end of year six. The build-out on this project is probably a six-to-eight, maybe 10-year build-out. It's difficult to project that. But it doesn't cost the city anything during that time and the developer is still on the hook for that entire reimbursement, no matter how long that phasing that build-out takes.
Okay, and I guess my concern there was that citizens sometimes think that we've sold this land, all of that money is going to come into our budget at one time, and it isn't going to come into our budget. And not only will we not recoup the cost of the land quickly, we also will not begin to collect the ad valorem taxes quickly.
That's right.
Because there's a whole process of selling the house, getting it intat and then billing and collection process.
That's right.
So we just need to know that.
One point before.
We're not getting, we're getting a wonderful project.
Yeah.
And it is absolutely good for the city. It's just that it's not going to be a boon where we get, this year, a whole bunch of money.
Yeah.
We're not.
That's true. And let me put that in context historically.
Okay.
The basis that the city has in this land is extremely low. The city has owned, the EDC has owned this land for a very long time.
Yes.
And so the, the good news is because your basis is so low, you're going to be able to recoup all of your basis in that first sale. So you're, you're going to be in positive financial condition from the get-go because now we have ad valorem revenues where none have been produced at all on this property. And now we have revenue coming in from the sale where we've only had exposure to a very low basis in the past. So, no, there is no big tranche of money that comes in, but remember, this, this basically is an easy EDC property, so it will be sold, basically, to the EDC, will then transfer those dollars into the city general fund based on the structure that you've put in your EDC. So you're right, it's not a big slug of money, but it also doesn't represent a negative cost to the city because of the way the basis is structured.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add is two things. They have to pay interest on this, just like they would anything else. And then the other thing that's important to remember is, is that from the, when we close on this property, even though they're paying it out in phases, it's back, all 42-plus acres is on the tax rolls, which they start paying from day one. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
If you have no more question, this is an action item and I go ahead and make a Ms. Leece.
Matter of the 380 development agreement between Beaton Path and Haltem City, I make the motion that we approve.
Thank you, Ms. Leece. Ms. Ricky Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's for a second.
Okay, we have a second. We're ready for, register your vote. Did you hit the button?
We're waiting on the software.
Right, we're having a difficult, technical difficulty just as a matter of going to record the vote, call in favor, raise your hand.
Register, you have the unanimous approval.
Thank you.
For item number eight. Now, I don't, do you have any city staff reports? No. Do you have a future agenda?
No.
Marian Hiller?
Thank you.
Linda Thompson?
Marian Hiller.
Did you have some?
No, you have one?
Can I go?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to add on our future agenda, the creation of the Ethics Commission.
Okay.
I also would like to have the assignment of council liaisons to the boards and commissions.
Okay.
And at some point, not necessarily the next meeting, but at some point, pretty soon, I'd like to have the presentation that the city attorney gave before regarding the open meetings and the visitors' forum rules, and, and that was an excellent presentation. It's very informative for the citizens and I'd like him to do that again. That's all for me. Thank you.
That's all you have? People are hungry and waiting. By the way, any resignation of the board or commission?
Right, you have, you have three, Alana, Alana Telson.
Okay, this time we have three people reside, that Alana Telson, Wayne Clowers and Jerry Gannaway. We can register the vote together. Okay, go ahead, register your vote. Favor, raise your hand. No, we got it now, okay. Thank you. Unvocale and unanimous. By the way, the, any more resignation? If you don't have, I have one appointment.
I need a book, please.
Okay, on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mary.
My little button didn't, I don't know how to work this thing. I just wanted to let you know that I resigned also. I had to resign from the P and Z and from the Animal Advisory Board.
Okay.
So I resign.
You sure?
Sure.
Okay.
Liaison.
Mrs. Marian Hiller resign from.
Animal Control.
Animal Control and.
P and Z.
P and Z, yes.
Okay, accept your resignation, but.
Okay, go ahead, register your vote. Okay, unanimous approval and now no more resignation will be appointment and reapportment. You have any reapportment? Ms. Linda Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint William Bill Edwards II to the Parks Board.
Okay, go ahead, register your vote. Number five, unanimous approval for appointment, any more appointment or reapportment? If you don't, I would like to appoint Mr. Brent Leece for EDC as a council member because Mr. Bob Watkins no longer a council member and that my appointment.
Okay, you have a question, but.
You have a question? Mary, go ahead. You have a question?
No.
No?
But I have appointments.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Go for Brett.
Wait, for Brett, okay. Go ahead, register for the, Ms. Brent for EDC. Number five. Okay, we have unanimous approval for Mr. Brent to be with the EDC. And now, Ms. Marian Hiller?
Okay, to the Fire Services Board, I reappoint George Kaufman.
George Kaufman, okay.
Do you want, can I do them all at one time? Or do you want them separate?
Yeah, together.
Okay, for Parks and Rick, I'm not sure if it's Cherie or Sherry Crum. Which one?
Sherry.
Sherry, okay. And for Planning and Zoning, Jennifer Alkon. And for the Animal Advisory, Nancy Watkins.
Okay, what do you number the second one?
The second one, Park and Rick.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
What's the name?
Was Sherry Crum.
Sherry Crum.
That's a reapportment.
Okay. Ms. Hillier, Marian Hillier have four appointment and if you already heard the name, I don't have to repeat, then go ahead, register your vote, please. Unanimous approval, okay. At this time, you know, like Memorial, I have, or they accept the attending in Arlington, so I believe we have one in Haltem City. That's important, we need the mayor pro temp at this time. And I can appoint Mr. Lynn Thompson for mayor pro temp. You have any question?
Sorry, we don't have that on the agenda for the.
No, okay. We don't have this on the agenda, so we can do on the next meeting, okay? Now, you have one executive session. Okay, at this time, we reside to the executive session on the chapter 551 dot 071 and 551 dot 072. And we will come back. At this time, I would like to invite everybody to go out there and we have egg roll, drink and come back, will be short. And after that, all Vietnamese want to have interview or, you know, with television and we have comment and I might can fly suit, you know, and make a show for you and we will have fun, okay? Hang around here, two days, just one day for the mayor, okay? Please, thank you.